The same.
I just yellow.
Wait for Jane to come back. It's seven P M on Monday, January thirteenth, twenty twenty five, and I call the planning board meeting to order. First, we'll start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Going to start with planning board member attendance. Mr. Robertson.
Present.
Mr. Drew.
Here.
Ms. Henderson.
Here.
Mr. Tribu.
Here.
Mr. Parker is here. Ms. Sardina, she's running a few minutes late. She is on her way, but for right now she is will be marked tardy. Mr. Samaya. Also, we'll give him the opportunity to come in when he comes in, but for now he's not here. So five of seven members are here tonight. Before we get to our regular order of business, first item is open microphone. Seeing nobody in the room, is there anybody on Zoom? If you're on Zoom, put your hand up and I'll give you a second to. Put your hand up if you want to speak if you're on Zoom.
Chair, there are no hands raised on Zoom. However, I just want to comment that Evan Samaya has entered the meeting through Zoom.
Oh, perfect. Okay. Mr. Samaya.
Yes.
Say hello.
Yes.
All right. Let's show the record that Mr. Samaya is present now, just a minute after we took roll call.
First item on the agenda, Mr. Chairman, is a B two subdivision for zero two Carmina Road in a village residential zone. Due to a typo in the obuses, the applicant asked to continue this.
Okay.
No mistake, Mr. Chairman, it's not open yet. We should open it to continue it.
Oh, yes.
Yes, please.
I make a motion to open the public hearing and waive the reading of the record.
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded. Mr. Robertson.
Aye.
Mr. Drew.
Aye.
Ms. Henderson.
Aye.
Mr. Samaya.
Yes.
Mr. Tribu.
Yep.
And I am an eye to open the public hearing.
Then now I make a motion to continue the public hearing to February the tenth.
Second.
Motion and seconding. Mr. Samaya.
Yes.
Mr. Tribu.
Yes, just a question. Do we need to put the whole? The road in there or no? It's fine.
No, yeah, we're good.
Okay, yeah, then yes, yep.
Mr. Drew.
Aye.
Mr. Robertson.
Yes.
Ms. Henderson.
Yes.
And I am a yes to continue the public hearing due to a. Typo error. So we will. Give Ms. Sardina one moment to get settled.
I do apologize.
No worries at all. You're okay.
Just got my license back. Couldn't find the car keys. Go to Kelly's world. Yeah, but it's not.
We know when you're. You sure?
Yeah.
The second item on the agenda, Mr. Chairman, is the S P S P site plan special permit for one fifty five Travel Cove Road. The public hearing was opened August thirteenth.
Okay, Mr. Lantini.
That's for the T V.
Okay. All set now?
Just restate your name for the record.
Restate my name for the record. My name is Attorney Stephen Lantini, and I am again here representing the applicant's Cassidy Landscaping LLC. And its manager owners, Patrick and Ryan Cassidy here in the audience tonight, and this is an application, as you stated, for a site plan special permit under section six of the zoning bylaws, as well as a special permit for a contractor's yard at the premises at one five five Triple Cove Road. As the board is aware, we first appeared before you in August of last year. At that point in time, I think we were the first test case of the new consultant hiring process, so it took a couple of meetings, I believe, to get a consultant on board. And since that time, when Places was hired, our engineer, Steve Glackey, who's here in the office, has been working, as you would expect, closely with the town's consultant to put together a plan that we think will be a credit to the town and to the neighborhood. As of today, we have reached an endpoint with the town's consultant. I think there's just a few subjective issues that remain, and otherwise, I think you heard from your consultant today that all of the responses have been met. You know, again, there's always going to be some subjective issues. Likewise, with regard to the D P W, I think their final comment to the board today was just a few technical tweaks to the plan, all of which can be made with with no problem. We do believe we've met all the criteria for section six of the zoning bylaws for a site plan special permit, as well as those required for a contractor's yard. And in addition to receive what's oftentimes granted by the board, reduction in the green strip requirements. As you're aware, early on in the process, the petitioners met after comments from the D P W asking that they would contribute and construct sidewalk offsite by Vietnam Veterans Park of approximately four hundred and fifty feet in lieu of sidewalk essentially to nowhere in front of the site. That's concrete granite curb sidewalk greater length than would be installed here. There was negotiations between the applicants, the Cassidys, and Larry and Jim and the Dictics, who are the current owners of the property. And that was resolved. And with that resolution, the application was put in front of this board. So that is one of the proposed conditions. Specific conditions that's in front of you, but that was at the request of the D P W. Again, we would, I know there's been a lot of back and forth with the board members as to what a perfect project should look like versus what this project might look like. And again, what we would say that the beauty of the site plan special permit is you do get to regulate where you would not if it was a buy right use for under five thousand square feet. So where you can regulate hours, landscaping, planting, lighting, et cetera, that would not be accomplished as any of the buy right users that could be allowed on this site if they were developed under five thousand square feet could do. So again, we would just caution the board, don't let the perfect be the enemy of good. We think we've got a very good project here. Nonetheless, with contributions being made to the community as well as something that's harmonious to the town, surrounded by state forest, so you're really not impacting any immediate abutters touching the property. And again, if you look at the characteristics of the neighborhood, there's essentially a contractor's yard that's been grandfathered for quite some time right across the street. So it's our hope, and I think it would be timely that we would address any final questions or comments you might have. I don't know if there's anybody online. I don't see. I guess we've worn out the abutters with the number of hearings that we've had, so I don't see any abutters present in the audience anyway, whether any are online. I don't want to speak too much out of turn. But any final questions you might have, any final comments you might have on the proposed conditions that Catherine's prepared and that we would be agreeable to. And in that circumstance, we would hopefully move towards closing the hearing tonight and and voting the conditions tonight. But before I yield the podium to your questions, I'm gonna, Patrick would like to just say a couple of words to the board.
Good evening, board. As you all know who I am and my brother. I want to thank you, all you folks, for everything up to this point. I know. As you guys probably know, we started this process, you know, a little, little over a year ago. My brother and I are a small company. We started this right out of high school. And we have so much passion for everything we do on a day to day basis. So before you guys make a decision, I know we would be a great addition to this town. Whether it be just a simple thing as coming to a school one day and teaching the kids how to plant a tree or doing whatever we can within reason. I can say without a doubt, once we're approved, if we are approved, we will be a great addition. So I just wanted you folks to just keep that in mind before any decisions are made. And I appreciate everything. We both, we both do immensely, so.
He says it has been, when he said it's been a long time, and we've been in front of you since August, but this did start early last year. You know, we were at the zoning board in June, but prior to going to the zoning board, it was in March or April when the issues first arose that we met with the D P W on. So it has been about a year long process here now. I'm all set.
Absolutely. So the hard copies in front of you are the memos that came today from D P W and from the peer review, which respond to the revisions and comments sent in earlier by the applicant's team, which you got those by email previously as well. So it looks like everything is pretty caught up. On the top page, we have a drafted conditions list for the decision. Most of these are actually straight from the applicant's side where these it's what they're offering, what they've heard from you guys over the previous months. We have the sidewalk condition towards the bottom of that. Anything else that you guys are looking to ask maybe hasn't been vetted in a meeting yet, so I didn't want to specifically put that out there. But if you've given me any ideas, then the applicants are aware as well.
Grab a mic. All right, go ahead, Kelly.
I guess my ask is, it's a landscaping company, and in the town, we've had some issues getting wood chips. We had to put it into our town meeting. And I'm wondering if the applicant would be, would consider donating a substantial amount of wood chips for our parks.
What's substantial, Kelly?
You're asking me? One hundred thousand yards. I know.
I don't, I mean, we wouldn't even produce that much, even though what we chip, but I mean, again.
I just threw a number.
If it's, if it's something we can do and that that's easily done, then you know, I mean.
I know Kids Connection has been in dire need of wood chips constantly. If I could get that just started off in the beginning of the year, maybe.
I would just need to see, my brother and I would just want to see the square footage first on, you know, before we committed to anything. But like I said, stuff like that, you know, you know, if approved within reason, I mean, there's, there's no reason we can't work together and figure something out.
I'll have the square footage by the end of the meeting.
And things like that are good business, obviously. You get a little sign in front of the Kids Connection or wherever, you know, landscaping, which is donated by, you know.
Let's start. Mr. Samaya is on. On Zoom tonight, Mr. Samaya.
I, I don't have any comment at this time.
Okay, Mr. Drew.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm not going to ask you for any free stuff. But I will say that I don't have any questions at this time. I will. I have no problem with the project. I think it's a good one, and we'll be seeing it in operation. Thank you.
Mr. Robertson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I too agree that this is a, appears to be a good project. Appreciate the accommodation that you guys have made, your comments tonight. I'm particularly happy about the sidewalk that is going to go in, and I appreciate the mutual work on, on all parties to, to get that, to make that happen. However, we have some procedural things that, that we need to deal with. As reflected in the August minutes. I asked for both police and fire input on the, the intersection there. And I still haven't seen anything from the police. So August to September to October to November to December to January. Extraordinarily disappointing. Asked again last meeting, still nothing.
We did send the follow up after the last meeting, which is what we haven't heard back from.
Five months is a long time for my perspective, a simple ask, so. We need to do better. Similarly. You know, to get these documents at the meeting again, is, is disheartening, heartening. You know, we, I, I asked for this stuff a week in advance so that I can do proper preparation. We, this board owes that to you all, to the town, et cetera. And so I'm gonna have to abstain from voting tonight if we vote on this because I got materials entirely too late. Okay, I would support this. I intend to support it, but I would really think for principles, purposes, and I hate to mess you guys over and delay it another month. But the principal says we should delay this a month and, and then deal with that. Thank you. That's all I have.
Mr. Tribu.
Just ask.
Okay.
Blake, for a second. Blake, so you were looking for something for the fire department beyond, beyond, beyond this? Yeah, okay.
I think he was also looking for a police safety, you know.
I know you have a traffic study.
Right, and, and, and the last meeting, you know, it was pointed out that there's a traffic, you know, traffic guy, you know, for crosswalk safety person, whatever, there. And that, that is hopeful, but it was a simple ask. It should have been able to get answered. And it still hasn't. And that's not you guys' fault. It's, it's an internal town problem, but thank you.
Mr. Tribu.
So, yeah, I just wanted to, I, I just wanted to say, I believe that I, I think that you guys will be a, a nice addition to the town in terms of a business. Thanks for working with us over the course of, and, and that's with any project, we just want to work with the, the applicant or the business in town and just actually make sure that a good project comes up. And I feel like we've, we've, we, we have done that. And you know, it was, you know, spirited back and forth, and then to get a thing from, from Susan saying that, oh, it, you know, it's good, you know, outside of that with, when, when there was a bit of a spirited back and forth. So I, it's actually good to see that. Like, and I just noticed that some of the, you know, I was looking at the, just the D P W comments, and so as long as those are essentially resolved, I don't, which are, like you said, it just looked like minor things. So as long as those are resolved, I have no no issue. And so, yeah.
Okay, just want to confirm that with Steve again. You have no problem with the changes to the plan.
Yeah, the, including the new comments and everything else, everything correct. All right. That's it, Chair. No more else there.
Ms. Sardina.
I really don't have that many questions. I think you'll be a good asset to the community. We do need businesses. I think you're gonna, I know a lot of people are upset that it's in a wooded area. I mean, there is the forest there, and I understand that. And I think you'll blend in. I don't think it's going to be something that's going to stand out like a sore thumb. I mean, you're in landscaping. I think you want to make it attractive. You seem to be a reputable business. I have looked into you. Probably most board has, just to make sure. So I really don't have that many. I have no questions, no objections at this time.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Bear with me. I looked at section one B and C, the purpose and objectives of our zoning bylaw at section six, the site plan approval on section thirteen, the special permits. I've pointed out from the start that the forest isn't a butter too. You say, oh, there's a forest. We don't need to do any green strips. Just because the neighbor is a state forest doesn't waive the applicant's requirement for green strips. In the unhoped for event that the state sold this forest for other uses, there would be no setbacks or green strips or buffers anymore. The June twenty twenty four Z B A variance request was for setback relief for building and retaining walls due to topography and slope. The Z B A granted that setback relief based on topography and slope. I find the Z B A decision poor, given fact that the shape or the topography of the lot was seen as hardship, but the shape of the lot offsets the steepness of the hill. So instead of going straight up, you could go slightly. I disagree with the Z B A findings, but it's happened. I did not appeal it because I have little standing in the case. I am not an abutter. And I suffer no personal harm. And if I were to appeal the decision, I'd have to recuse myself from the planning board discussion. And I want to be part of that discussion because this proposal harms the public and D C R. But the state cannot be here to defend itself because legally, a state department cannot influence municipal decisions. So it's on the planning board to speak for the common good based on our zoning bylaws, master plan, and the open space and recreation plan. The Billrica State Forest is an asset for community health, physical and mental health. And the trails on this one hundred forty one acre parcel are well used. The project impairs access to, and this is from the bylaw, maintaining and improving public health and safety. It goes on a little bit more. In my opinion, the project does not meet the objectives of the bylaw. Rather than concluding that this parcel wasn't worth purchasing due to size, slope, and topography, the applicant tries to use your words, shoehorn a contractor's yard into Gilson Hill, a Billrica State Forest, an open space gym. There is ample correspondence over the past ten years proving attempts to change the industrial zoning for Gilson Hill and asking for an easement from the owner, current seller, to no avail. I respect ownership and the rights that come with it, but I would like the fact noted for the record that the attempts have been there. A tropical road is a gateway to Billrica. The surrounding area is a well-used state forest natural environment and I'm in chapter, in section six of the zoning bylaw. And a building or a contractor yard are aesthetically unacceptable and not harmonious with established land uses because recreation is a land use in Billrica. And it is insensitive to the context of the surrounding area. Those are all from the zoning bylaws. It's directly across from a residence in village residential zoning. Now, there is also a contractor's yard that is grandfathered in, and I think it's a very unfortunate variance. So, yeah, I, in, in my opinion, it is detrimental and offensive. No offense to the landscape companies, Mr. Mr. Cassidy.
Cassidy.
Cassidy, but the use, the hole into the hill isn't, is offensive. The exterior road renderings that came with the plan are just inaccurate. And it might have just been the architectural program that it's technical, technically not able to include a three hundred and ten foot summit in the background. But, you know, it's not intentional, but it's deceptive. The D P W comments are between the applicant and D P W is all good and in my eyes, resolved that list. But I cannot approve the plan without two more asks. The, the sidewalk, the four hundred fifty or four hundred seventy five foot sidewalk is all nice and dandy, but it does not mitigate. It's, it has nothing to do with Gilson Hill. I would like to see a protected crosswalk from the sidewalk near the learning experience sign right across the street to a sidewalk pad. And then with the state, volunteers can cut a new trail to to replace the, the lost, say, historical trail that we've been using. I admit we trespassed, but it was a fantastic access point, and we'll just have to cut a new one. So with the solar powered, manually activated flashing beacons in anticipation of the to be cut state forest trail, replacing the historical access. And additionally, to make the loss of this access, the lack of rear setback, the temporary construction nuisance less painful. A donated bench to be installed at the summit by trail volunteers. I, I have a nice image of it, if you're, I don't know if you've already seen.
Sure, that with my client.
And without those two, the crosswalk and the bench, I, I feel hurt. So with the bench, I'm gonna be distracted, and I'm gonna sit on top of the mountain on the bench and think, this wasn't so bad. So I'm, I mean, I'm saying this with a smile, but so, yeah, that's, there's one question that I have, maybe for the staff or for you. If I look at the table, the seven L, it's, it speaks to the, the perimeter of the property, the twenty foot. It's, and the perimeter of the building, but it also speaks of twenty five percent green space. Is that there?
Green space on the lot as a whole. Defer to my engineer, and then we'll go back to your other.
The chair just told me thirty point one, so you do not need a waiver for that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
What I needed for the.
Yeah, I, I don't want to go point, kind of point out everything you just said, because we'd be here for a while. Other than to say, again, a, a buy right user, you would lose a lot of the controls that you're talking about here tonight. And again, it wasn't the D Benedictus's or anybody else other than the town that's owned the, the property this way. And I'm, I'm not aware of attempts to, to rezone it. Obviously, that would take town meeting action. But again, I'm starting to get into what I told you I wouldn't get into. With regard to the bench, I think that's easy. I don't think the Cassidys have any problem with the bench. Our concern with the traffic light would be a couple of things. You got an elementary school across, I mean, the crosswalk, excuse me. You got an elementary school across the way. Is this going to start inviting the children to use the crosswalk to cross the street where they otherwise wouldn't even be thinking about crossing the street and then. crossing the street? And then when they get across the street, again, until the state creates that new trail, you know, are they gonna start going on to the Cassidy's property and maybe creating a hazard to themselves on the Cassidy's property? So that would be one concern, you know, on, on an easement that really isn't a legal easement. Didn't show up in any title search, nothing that we can see. There's been no trespassing signs there for years. The other issue that I'm concerned about, and I've had this discussion with Steve, if you put a crosswalk there, especially with any kind of signalization, even if it was just a push button to stop, you're in close proximity to those lights that acts, you know, work in conjunction with getting on to Route Three in River Street. And I'm not sure if you're gonna now get involved with mass DOT, you know, you're gonna get all kinds of expense there, time delays, costs that I really think would make it cost prohibitive. I think a better give may be, I know it's not something that you might be looking for, but I think a better give would be maybe to do something, and we've discussed this, and I think Kelly might have brought it up at a prior hearing, maybe do something over at the Deutau Playground for the children there. So do the bench on top of Gilson Hill. The Cassidy's will want to make a contribution, especially if their name's on it, to further the playground at the Deutau School. That way, you're creating more attractiveness for the children within their school setting as opposed to making something attractive to them to cause a busy street. And I think I mentioned the last time, that trail was primarily used by people on cross-country bikes, I believe. None of those are of an age that they would really fear crossing the street, to be honest with you. And I think at the same time, you know, if the state puts an access in later on, great, if they put it on state property, it's still the same dynamic. I don't think there's gonna, anybody that's cross-country biking on trails in the state forests isn't afraid or in fear of crossing Treble Cove Road. And there's an easy access even presently to get probably less than a half a mile down the road to the main entrance to the state park. If you're coming to bike, you've got your bike. You're a half mile down the road and probably forty-five seconds on a bike. So hopefully, that would be agreeable to you, Marley's. I think doing something at the playground, putting the bench on Gilson Hill, you know, again, their contributions to the community, I think, which is money better spent for the community at the same time. And it's not gonna impact all those delays and costs that I'm talking about. I don't even know what kind of price tag you would put on a crosswalk with the light between engineering, mass DOT delays, and what they would chart, you know, what they would want to recycle the lights or coordinate the lights, you know, a short distance away for where you get on the Route Three North. I just
Push button.
Go ahead.
A push button.
Yeah, but I think even if you push that button, you might have issues with the Treble Cove Road light cuz you can disrupt it. I'm sure it has to be coordinated that if, you know, suddenly people are pushing the button there and you're gonna cause a jam up at that light. I, it wouldn't surprise me at all if that would have, even a push button light would have to be coordinated.
I don't see a difference with an intersection with a push button.
Your, it's distance between the intersection, I think, is really what comes into play. So that would be our offer. You know, and hopefully that would satisfy you, is to, you know, contribute playground equipment at the Deutau School, you know, rather than doing that sidewalk, that crosswalk. Like I keep saying sidewalk, I should say crosswalk.
Through the chair, and if it were a crosswalk with just a sign.
So no.
Similar to what we have at one twenty-nine between the two state forests, a crosswalk and signage at the crosswalk and a sign in front.
What would the, what would the sign, what would the signage, what would the signage say?
Person walking.
Just person walking.
Watch out, person walking.
I'll, you know, again, I don't wanna get too far.
Hi, for the record, Steve Lowacki, Argio Carlin Associates. To, to, the short of it is, I don't know what type of coordination would trigger. I think the big challenge is, is not even the cost of, of a simple stripe. Cuz you're talking about simply striping and a couple of pedestrian crossing signs. I think the challenge is the protracted coordination with the state, cuz I think they are gonna be, that's gonna be something that they're gonna, you know, whether it be signalized with a, with a push button or even signed, I think the proximity to Route Three, the accessway makes it a challenge. I, I'm not saying it's, you can't overcome it, but I think it could be a long protracted. As I'll tell you, you know, working with mass DOT is not the simplest thing, and it typically requires, you know, quite a bit of coordination over a lengthy period of time. And again, it's not necessarily the dollar, well, I don't wanna say that for the Cassidy's, it's not necessarily the dollars, but but I, I think it's just that timeframe of potential being an issue, that simple as that is really my, my, my fear.
Through the chair. We had, we did have an issue with the crosswalk before in the past on another plan, which was Cook Street. So that is a, an ask which would be difficult cuz we don't know. So just, Marley, I don't know if you remember that with Cook Street, we had such a hard time with crosswalk. I'd hate to go through that again. Or ask anybody else to have to go through that again. Just wanna let that know. And I just wanted to ask through our direct, through our director, when did town meeting zone this industrial? It's been industrial for how long? Do you know?
Forever.
Yeah, I, I would, I wouldn't be surprised if you go back to when zoning was adopted in Bilrika in forty-five, that it might have been adopted at that point in time or shortly thereafter.
That's where the interest, cuz I mean, it's two acres of land, so that Fifty years? Yeah, so that makes it, I mean, like Steve had said, we've said, is it would have to go through town meeting to change zoning? I understand there's a forest there. I do. He owns the land. It's two acres. There's a big forest. So it zoned it. We should, if passion fire, we should have took it through, somebody could have took it through town meeting and changed the zoning on it, but, okay, thank you, sorry.
So, Ms. Henderson.
Yes, I'm done talking.
All right. At least it's thinking. I can tell. I see the pensive look.
Why? It was either Kelly or myself that brought up the playground stuff with the Deutau.
Okay.
Cuz the PTO did reach out to me. And I did think it was a little late in the process to be asking for more, but through the Bilrika Playground Project, who did a lot of fundraising and, and community grants, they were able to do, provided the Deutau eleven thousand dollars towards their playground just recently. So it would be good if maybe that was the in-kind donation to replenish those funds back to, you know, the Deutau PTO.
Can I, can I call it?
That was the, that was the donation of community-raised funds, yes.
Yeah, so you're looking to get reimbursed, that, you know, basically replenish the fund.
Just, you know, kind of offered that, so that was what was relayed to me during this process, so.
I, I never liked, I don't wanna be the one.
Right.
I mean, with that being said, we just, at this point, you know, I think we wanna see some forward motion as well.
Yes, sir.
You know, I, I mean, I think, I think we're we're doing everything we can, and we wanna see some forward motion before we keep moving in a direction of promising everything and seeing minimal. And I hope you folks understand that.
Forward motion.
Yeah.
I don't need my wood chips. You do the playground.
So that, that was relayed to me late in the process. And
With still a, with still a sign at the playground.
Just opened up that.
Right. No, and, no, I get it. And that, and that was in lieu of the, the crosswalk, obviously. And, and with signage at the Deutau that, you know.
Right, well, this would have to go through a donation process, I believe, with the school committee, where they will also give them, you know, they'll call out who was giving the donation and so they will get the, the public props there. And then I'm sure this can be something that we can work out with a small plaque that says equipment, you know.
Yeah. No, any business wants its props when it makes a donation like that, understandably.
And, and as far as the crosswalk goes, I know we have this exhibit highlighted.
No, you're confusing things like me. So you mean the sidewalk, no?
Sidewalk.
Okay.
Crosswalk, sidewalk.
I'm glad I'm not the only one.
This is highlighted. And I've heard two hundred feet, I've heard four hundred and fifty feet. I know a visual representation is sometimes better than an actual footage, cuz then that could get subjective. I've just, I don't believe that's four hundred and fifty feet. I haven't gone out with a rolling scale. So I would, I would wanna strike the footage out of any of our additions and make it so that it is from the ending of the sidewalk at Republic. I believe it says it in there, to ensure that, you know, don't say four fifty and they get out there and stop it at four fifty.
Yeah, I think the four hundred and fifty feet came from the DPW letter.
I, I'd just like to make sure our condition doesn't have a specific footage, but a described area.
Yeah, no, it did, though. I can give you a copy of that correspondence if you want, Mike.
All right.
I think that's probably in your file somewhere, but so that's where that, it wasn't a number we pulled out of thin air. That was a number.
Say, the applicant will work with the town to install sidewalk near Republic Road to Vietnam Veterans Park, National Exhibit. So we have, real quick for the staff, we have the number twelve DPW conditions, which is twelve B.
Twelve B, and then we didn't notice that, so we recreated the wheel down in number eighteen.
Okay, perfect. And that's
We only need it once.
And that's actually got the verbiage with, is that F Farm Road in it?
It says
Two seventy Treble Cove Road.
Starting at the southeastern side of, sorry, beginning at the southeast corner of Republic Road and Treble Cove Road, traveling southward and terminating at the northeast corner of the entrance to two seventy Treble Cove, first parking lot for Vietnam Veterans Park.
So that road is actually called Farm Road, though? Should we call it Farm Road?
I could not find a name on any mapping, so I'm happy to give it a name if that's legitimate.
I think Google.
For someone to be able, it's coming up on the Google map.
Google has it. Here you go.
So it was on, in their exhibit, it actually says Farm Road on there. We could say two seventy slash Farm Road. I just wanna
Yeah, on your plan, yeah.
This one.
Yeah, I'm not sure Fred put that on his.
Cuz I feel like the one up at Treble Cove Road on the other side, we didn't get enough, but
Yeah, but the, but Steve's trying to point out, let him take the mic.
If I can share.
Yes, you can share.
Cuz there was a plan that he submitted that mirrors the plan that Fred drew up, but the Farm Road is identified on that plan.
Yeah, the plan that I shared last time, which I think was erroneous, you pointed out, I, I think I stopped short of where I should have, but I can show you what I think it is. If I may. There we go. So the area in question, I think we stopped short right at the edge of Farm Road, but I think what we needed to do is put a crosswalk across this area here to take us into the parking area. So it's, it's just about there, but it's just a matter of crossing and then a ramp to land on the other side safely, you know, for pedestrians and things like that. So it's approximately five, four hundred fifty feet, linear feet of sidewalk, but you'll have a crossing and perhaps a ramp section on the other side to pick it up.
Right.
Oh, we can get the crosswalk there.
So chair, if I may.
Yes.
So if we are looking at the language.
I think one thing that should be kept in mind, when Fred brought that up, it was in the early stages of the negotiation. Actually, there was a purchase and sales agreement that had already been signed between the parties. That changed the dynamics of that purchase and sales agreement. So the parties had to go back to the drawing board and say, okay, this is, was unexpected. It's gonna cost us X to change that. So there was basically both sides, owner and applicant here, worked out that compromise to, to go forward. So you know, as long as that doesn't substantially change, obviously, cuz that was something that's been negotiated prior to the submittal here.
I would just in the number eighteen, we had, you know, southward approximately such and such feet, we'll cross that out. And then at the end, just will add with crossing to park as the engineer had just mentioned, they would stripe across the section. All right. Considering the applicant has stated their acceptance of some additional conditions, I do wanna make sure the board is okay asking for these conditions, so. Is anybody against us asking for the bench and/or the donation to the playground? I don't wanna put anybody on the spot necessarily, but without having to go, I, 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 yes, well, you know, if anybody is truly like, no, we can't do this, I just wanna get a feeling.
I just wanna get a clarification if I can, Mr. Chair. So we're not asking them to install the bench on state land. The state will install. Okay, just, 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 it's their, their obligations just to provide the bench.
Yes, donation of the bench for a volunteer-installed bench through the state.
So I mean, I do think that we're a little late in asking, but I, but I think that I appreciate their willingness to support and makes sense to me. Thank you.
Go ahead, Chris.
I have no, I have no problem with the offer that you, you proposed. That's, that's, if, if that's the offer that if, if you were, you, you kinda offered that to us. So if that's okay with that, then, then yeah, I don't, I don't have, I don't, I don't have an issue with that, that offer that you proposed.
Seeing that there is, we've done our questions, I'm gonna go to our audience. So anybody that's on Zoom, if you'd like to have your final thoughts while our public hearing is still open, please raise your hand. If there's anybody in the room here that would like to speak, please raise your hand. Please step up to the podium. Name and address for the record, please.
Michael Rosa, twenty-nine Riverdale Road, Borca, Mass. Just an FYI on whatever you're doing with the bench. The Board of Selectmen does have a bench policy to standardize benches in town, so if you could make a contingent upon following that.
Mr. Rosa, would you please look at the bench that I was asking for? It is not going to be very noticeable. I mean, there are a lot of different benches in town.
I mean, all benches have similarities where they have a back and a seat and arms. We're trying to standardize them across the town so that, that all, you know, if somebody wants to buy a memorial bench, they match the benches. So that's been a policy the Board of Selectmen have voted and put into effect, and we have specific benches in design criteria so that they have longevity and have the ability to be standardized. I just wanted to let the board know about that in case you didn't know.
I appreciate it, Mr. Rosa, and I thought of it, and I've looked for a bench elsewhere where I asked the town manager, what bench should I look for? And I personally don't like it. It's too frivolous with little thingies on the side. I like a straight look, and this one has the personalized Gilson Hill Summit on it, and it is for an eighteen hundred ninety-nine-dollar bench, I think you get a good quality bench, so.
So if you're referring
It's gonna be the only bench in the woods, so it's not like
Chair, point of order.
bench here or there.
Go ahead, Cat.
So I have looked up this legboard policy to see what kind of specs would be comparable or not, and if I can just read the first line, which is the scope. I think that'll maybe put this to bed. This policy applies to all future and replacement benches located within the town of Bilrika. This policy excludes benches that are located within the state or private property. So because this would be state land, I don't think would be specifically applicable, but if there's any given purposes of the town, we'd certainly at least want it to be compatible.
Correct. And, you know, some of the, just not to belabor it, but we looked at aluminum so that they don't rust, composite materials. Not to belabor it, but we looked at camp, uh, aluminum so that they don't rust, composite materials so they don't rot. Um, so I just wanted to make the board aware of that. Thank you.
Through you, Mr. Chair, I have actually also contacted the state. And the state happens to be in the process of working on their policy. So it's not gonna be a bench that's gonna be there, uh, overnight. Uh, there'll be some time, uh, before the state and, you know, policy, town policy and everything is lined up. But the state has their policies too. So even if this bench is not, uh, you, it could be that the state doesn't like this bench.
We're good. Good.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Um, anybody else in the audience? Please step to the podium, say your name, address, please. Go to.
Darlene Torrey, forty-seven Sheldon, Sheldon Street. Um, you had mentioned the playground project. So just to add another level to that. So. We've had some residents like John LaFosse who bought equipment for the Ditson. So it doesn't have to be a full monetary contribution that goes through the school committee into the budget for the playgrounds. If they're willing to, they could purchase equipment through. Um, I forget the name of the company, but that works with the school department like John did, have it shipped to the school and installed. So that's a, another way to think about it.
Thank you. Is there anybody on Zoom that would like to?
Chair, there are no hands raised.
Great. Okay, uh, with that being said, I'll accept a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Uh, oh, my apologies, Evans, um. Any last minute thoughts on that?
No, it's okay, Chair. I don't have any questions or objections.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, alright, so we have a motion to close the public hearing.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, before you close, I, I just, Marley, sir, we on the same page now with regard to the donation to the school in lieu of the, uh?
Or to add the bench and the playground. To the motion, but there's no rush. Would you?
Yeah.
Which?
The reason, I get concerned because I know that, that Blake can't vote, is not gonna vote. So I'm gonna, you know, I can't afford to lose another vote here, really, or.
There, there will not be a rush because all the policies have to line up.
Yeah.
Okay, so, um. Motion and a second to close the public hearing. Mr. Drew.
Aye.
Mr. Robertson.
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Simea.
Yes.
Mr. Traboo.
Yes.
Ms. Adina.
Aye.
And I am a yes to close the public hearing. Alright, so I'm gonna go back to Mr. Robertson real quick. I too am a firm believer about getting our information. Early. To our deep dives, the DPW memo that came out today. Basically just says. But like all the answers were okay. Um, there were no additional responses required. It actually closed the loop on some of the items. The second item we got was from our third party reviewer. And her statement was that, uh, she's reviewed all of the responses from the engineering team and DPW and she has. Given us a, a clean bill of her comments. Uh, so they were just kind of. The I's dotted and T's crossed, if you will. Uh, so I don't believe there was substantial information for myself tonight that would. Warrant me to ask us to continue further. Um, but I will. Yield to you as you are your own man and. Um, but I just wanted to give you my own. Two cents on that, if it meant anything.
No, I appreciate that very much, uh, Mr. Chair. The, the idea is not the, this, the salient. Information in these documents themselves. It is the principle that we continue to get stuff late. And without adequate time to fully review and digest. And, uh, and so for that principle, I, I will, again, will not, will abstain from voting on this issue. Thank you.
Alright, are there any, uh? Final. Go around, just give me a head yes, no, yes, no, no. Just had this say, okay, um.
I'd like a motion.
Please.
Um, I make a motion and I put it in the affirmative to approve a contractor's yard special permit pursuant to the. Town of Billerica zoning bylaws with hours of operation generally starting at six AM, office hours nine to five PM for the. Applicant only Cassidy landscaping at one fifty-five Treble Cove Road with waivers for law parameter. Building parameter. And conditions as discussed, standard and project specific plus a bench, no rush. Wood chips and playground amounts to be agreed upon in a friendly basis. How's that?
So the playground was a specific amount of money. It was. That was eleven thousand dollars.
An eleven thousand dollar playground.
Ms. Adina, you squashing the chips? Or you still want the chips?
Moon fence. Let's see if they just wanna donate them out of the goodness of their heart. How's that?
Leave the wood chips off.
Leave the wood chips off. Yet.
Who's the guy?
Okay.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Drew. Okay, so Ms. Henderson with a motion, including our waivers and our conditions.
I meant, just a point, point of order. Did, did I hear you say site plant special permit in, in there as well, or just contractor's yard special permit?
Uh, I said approve a contractor's yard special permit.
Site plant special permit, yeah, I think.
Plant.
Special permit, just to have the motion correct, yeah.
Special permit.
Yep.
That okay for the standard?
amended.
Third, second.
Okay, Mr. Drew has, uh, seconded our amended motion. I'm gonna start with. Mr. Simea.
I may, yes.
Mr. Drew.
Aye.
Mr. Robertson.
Abstaining.
Ms. Henderson.
Yes. For the bench.
Mr. Traboo.
Yes.
Ms. Adina.
Yes.
And I am going to round out the yeses, uh. Appreciate all the work that's been done. Little Rica Cassidy landscaping and. Look forward to you being a. Great business here in town. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mary. Is, is Dan still?
Just, uh, signing some paperwork. Give us a moment.
Next up, Mr. Chairman. A discussion. I'm sorry, it's going hard because my papers need to be flipped. An accessory dwelling units discussion. The board will discuss the Affordable Housing Act of twenty twenty-four changes to ADUs and next steps.
Alright, so we're gonna have the staff, uh, lead us off. With the presentation for ADUs.
Great, thank you. So I'm going to share my screen and I.
Before we start, do we have to open a public hearing? It was just a discussion.
It is not a public hearing, it's just discussion.
Just making sure. Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you.
He's coming.
Let him get situated.
Yep. So staff is gonna present the ADU by law to us.
Absolutely. Alright, so first I just wanna start off with, you know, everyone that has asked questions is saying, what are ADUs, AUDs? What, what are these? What are we talking about? So it is accessory dwelling unit and the town does have a webpage that we've created to try to help people through this. So first I just wanna talk about what they are and what they might look like. It's a secondary living space that's going to be on a single family property. And it could look a few different ways. So if you're looking at this image, the darker blue is your primary home and then that kind of. Lighter blue, maybe tealish color is what the accessory unit could potentially be. So it might be a detached or attached. It could be an attic conversion. Or it could be a basement conversion. It might be over your existing garage, or you might even take out your garage and convert that. So there's a few different ways depending on what your home and your needs look like already. Um, as one resident told me, if you have a sewer main going under your property, you probably can't build in that particular area. You'd have to look somewhere else. So that's generally what they are. They go by a lot of names. People have called them over the years bungalows, carriage houses, guest houses. We sometimes use the phrase in-law suite as well. For the. For the zoning bylaw that we have in town, what we call in-law suites is a special permit. You have to be. Thank you. You have to be attached. It needs to be someone related. It's no larger than eight hundred square feet. And again, it's by special permit review. So we already know those as in-law suites. So when we talk about accessory dwelling units. It can look very similar. So what the state has done is they've created a. New law that says our zoning needs to allow these accessory dwelling units by rights. They need to be allowed to be up to nine hundred square feet. They don't have to be attached. They don't have to be related. So it's a few things that are different than our existing in-laws. Our existing in-law standards. What we need to do as a result is figure out what needs to change in our policies to adapt to this state law. And we've been talking with the building commissioner and with state. Webinars and meetings and things like that. And ultimately, the main thing we need to do is update our definition of ADU, which will allow. The building commissioner to. Acknowledge that protected use that the state law has done. If we take out our existing. And put in. Are you muted? Speaker off. So if we were to take out our existing in-law bylaws that we know and that we're familiar with and put in this permitted ADU standard instead. Then the different technical criteria kicks in. So it's no longer really an extended, single-family home. It. For building code purposes, for fire code, it's two different units. It's two different occupancies. You start having to require fire rating and egresses and things like that and. Very technical stuff. The building commissioner is here to, to provide those actual technical answers. But in general, you have more. Life safety code requirements for an ADU that you don't have for an in-law. So what we can do and what we think is the better solution here is to adopt the definition. And then to let the building code and the rest of those processes still match whichever one. So in-law suite would still remain in the bylaw. As an in-law suite required by special permits with its own regular standards that we're familiar with. And then we would adopt that definition so that they could say, alright, if it's protected under the state law, just like anything with the Dover amendment would be. Then he can issue those permits appropriately. So we think that might be the simplest path forward. We know that the bigger question for most of the public isn't. What do you need to change in the zoning bylaw? It's just, how do they get this done? So I know the building department has had a lot of phone calls and a lot of inquiries. People are. At least some people are excited about this opportunity. Other people are naturally concerned and worried about what it might look like.
Mr. Building Commissioner. Please. It's everything you know. Found out and questioned.
Well, good evening, um. This, there's a couple of different ways to look at it. This is basically just a zoning change, kinda like the MBGA communities. Um, it's made at the state level enforced on all the communities, but. It's a zoning change. There are still building codes, health regulations that aren't affected by this. So in my eyes, what the state has just done is basically rezone every property from, there's no more single-family zoning. Every property is a two-family zone. They've just re-restricted the size of the additional unit. Um, but any construction of these is now. In the eyes of all the other DPW, fire department, building department, board of health is, as if you're essentially building a two-family home. Or if you wanna build it a detached. It's like adding another house to your property. The difference between an, an ADU and an in-law apartment is an in-law apartment is basically still a single-family home. In forty-eight, so as you can't restrict the contents of a single-family home. Um, and as a single-family home, an in-law apartment gets a lot of exemptions under the building code. It's not treated as a two-family. Supposed to be, you know, a family unit, living as a family unit. So I think a lot of people are excited about this ADU thing. Um, I think there's an opportunity here. But I think in the long run, they're going to be quite expensive to build. For what you end up in the long run. Um, I've been to a couple inspectors, uh, meetings where the states come out and spoken and then. And I think they were kinda taken aback that, wow, we didn't really consider. What this change does and what the effects it has on. All of these other regulations within the state. Um, and I think they walked away from that meeting kinda quite surprised. We've met internally. Um, with all the departments in town, just kinda going over some of the things that. Unanswered questions. Fortunately, it's zoning, it's new law, there's no case law. There's nothing to kinda fall back on. So everything is appealable. Um, any appeal of a decision that I make would go to the ZBA. The ZBA's decision isn't, uh, they don't accept that. It can go on to, uh, court from there. Um, so. So my department's looking at it, if you wanna put on an ADU. It has to meet the two-family building code. Which is, you know, Kat kinda alluded to, you get into fire separations, energy conservation, required means of egress. Utilities. And because these are rental units, now you get into, you know, housing code and meeting those regulations. So I think when people start to look at. All of these requirements and like people say, how come they don't build ranch houses anymore? Because economically, in the long run. They just don't pan out to, to make your money back. And that's why everyone's building these McMansions. So it, it goes into effect February sixth, we've had, you know, probably four or five people come in. I think we have like three applications sitting in front of us right now. But people have a, because it's labeled as an accessory structure, people have the assumption that it's like. Building a shed in your backyard and, you know, gonna put a kitchen and a bathroom in it and I'm gonna start making income and that's far from the case. There's still a lot of details to be worked out. Personally, I don't think we need to do anything to the zoning. The state's defined it, mass general law, the definition's there, it's easy to find, people are already aware of it. It's so new and fresh, a lot falls on my shoulders in about two weeks and I have to make some decisions that people aren't. Some people may like and, and some people may not like. But we're gonna be consistent with them, treat them as a two-family home. And go from there, probably. The easiest to do would probably be an addition to an existing house. Rather than. Trying to remodel an existing house, and then the biggest drawback to that is trying to get a two-hour fire separation between the units. That's a pretty intricate detail. That yes, can be pricey, splitting utilities. So yeah, I mean, there's a, there was a number of things that we looked at. With DPW, you know, trash implications, you could potentially double the amount of stops and pickups. You know, water and sewer hookups. And I think we agreed that because it's an accessory as a single-family home and it's a zoning. The water and sewer hookups would need to come from the existing house and any metering or anything like that would have to be done by the property owner. Utilities. Like gas and electric. That hasn't been determined yet, but there are housing codes that require you to have access to your electric panel in case you trip a breaker. So that's still something to figure out. Curb cuts, street openings. I think. Again, like I was saying, I, I think an addition might be the easiest. I don't see it. Because we don't have reduced setbacks for accessory structures like a lot of communities do. The only reduced setbacks we have for accessory structures are for sheds under a hundred square feet. It's gonna preclude a lot of properties from just plunking one of these in their backyard because it has to meet the same setbacks as the main dwelling. So on a five thousand square foot lot, most of these are right at the setback lines now. So to put one in the backyard, you would need to seek a variance. Now, there's no case law here. Is that a, is that really a hardship that I can't get another dwelling unit on my property? Or is that a reflection of the size of the property that you're on? So that's, you know, like one of those things that's gonna have to be played out with case law, somebody at some point will wanna get a variance to put one in their yard. Maybe the next-door neighbor doesn't want it closer to their house because they don't know who the tenants are gonna be. And it gets denied. Then it's up for the applicant to, you know, appeal it through court and establish the first case law. But I think we have. Somewhat of a good handle on it now for something that's so new. Egress.
There was one thing that I was reading, I'm not sure, are they trying to stay, change it to where one is acceptable? Instead of having two?
Again, this is just, it's a zoning change.
Yeah.
Has nothing to do with building codes. Building codes are all life safety. That requires two means of egress. So that would have to be a change at the state level through the, you know. Board of Building Regulations and Standards, which I can't see them eliminating. A life safety item that's been in place on the code since the code's been established.
So you stated we could. Do nothing, which would obviously have people go to mass general law for the accessory dwelling unit.
Well, essentially, I think what was recommended, and my concern is, we're gonna insert a definition to the zoning. Which means it's gonna go in front of town meeting at this point. There's no case law, there's gonna be a lot of misunderstanding and that's now gonna allow people to, hey, I propose that we amend and add. And we wanna go through that for a definition that the state already has. That, you know, people that are aware of this are also aware of the definition. It's easy to look up, there's a lot of stuff in forty-eight that's not. Verbatim in our zoning. There's exceptions for, you know, handicapped accessibility on a single-family home. There's no mention of that in the zoning. That's one of the, the things like my office would, you know, if we have somebody that comes in that needs a. Accommodation for accessibility. We should be, you know, we're obligated, but we should be communicating that with the applicant that this is how you can get that ramp and not worry about the setbacks. But we don't address it in the zoning. Forty-eight also says you can't restrict the contents of a single-family house. That's nowhere in the zoning and you've probably all heard, as long as you don't have two stoves, you're good. Which is not written anywhere. It's, it's actually the contrary. Forty-eight says you can have as many stoves as you want in a single-family home. Because it specifically says you cannot restrict the contents. So it's not. Zoning violation until it's used in violation of the zoning, if that makes sense. In other words, you can have, you know, the summer kitchen upstairs or the summer kitchen downstairs. And the winter one upstairs and you use it that way. That's not a violation. But when you sell the house and someone else comes in and says, oh, wow, I can rent that and I can rent this. And they do it, then it becomes a violation.
Well, it comes with their, I would think with their mortgage company too, a lot of these homes are sold as a single-family.
Yeah, I mean, I see with the in-law apartments, person that puts it on, puts it on with the right intention. They're trying to accommodate a family member, an elderly, you know, mom or. Help their kids out to get started and it, and it's all's well and good until they put the house up for sale. And they're gonna move out of town and they wanna get the most money for it. And someone comes in and looks at it and says. Well, I can now afford this nine hundred thousand dollar house because I can get two thousand dollars a month rent. And they include that in their mortgage application. Well, the appraiser comes in, comes down and asks, is this a legal two-family? And no, it's a single-family with an in-law. And then the mortgage gets denied. And then either the seller or the buyer comes in and, and blames my office, why'd you stop the sale?
The new energy codes would have coming out. That's not, that's more on you than us anyway.
Yes. So. Yeah, I mean, it's kinda, to me, it's a contradiction that the state's working against itself. I mean, all this is about creating more housing, creating affordable housing, you know, trying to house everyone. But then on the other hand, they start. Creating these codes that get more and more stringent that add more and more costs to trying to build an affordable house. And these smaller homes are much more difficult, a nine hundred square foot. ADU is gonna be much more difficult to get to pass the, this new energy code than a five thousand square foot home. So you're gonna be dumping, you know, more and more, trying to make it more weather tight, less in air infiltration to get it to pass. Now, that's one of the detractions of doing a detached. On an attached, there's an exemption under a thousand square feet. So this says you can't go over nine hundred. The other thing that the state hasn't answered in, in, in talking with inspectors is this, you know, nine hundred square foot max. Or half the area of the home, whichever is less. Well, what happens when you wanna do it in an existing home like a split that's say eighteen hundred square feet? I wanna do nine hundred upstairs. Half eighteen hundred's nine hundred, so I can have one upstairs and downstairs. And that's not the way what's being interpreted in the inspectors is. Now you have, they're equal, one's not accessory to the other. So you wouldn't be able, you'd, you'd need like twenty-eight hundred square feet to be able to convert nine hundred within the existing house. So that's why I think what you're gonna see the most of is attached additions. It's easier to tap into the existing sewer, the existing water, the utilities, the only. Places where I think you might see detached pop-up are on. Through lots where they have frontage on two streets. Because now you can orientate a smaller nine hundred facing the road that was in your backyard. Kinda looks like a freestanding house, you can get access. For utilities off the street. It's, it's a new playing field that the state just kinda threw out there and hasn't really defined.
Things I did notice in some of the language was, you know, like the MBTA, it says half mile within the train, well, transit station. But then when I look at the state language again, it says a bus or a bus station. Anything, but it also considers anything where you can flag a bus is a half mile within there. And this goes to the parking end of it, because we would have no control over the parking, because you can flag a bus anywhere on Boston Road. So we can't ask for any more parking.
Yeah, I, I don't really see that as an issue that, you know, it's not Cambridge, it's not.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, we have winter parking bans, they can't park in the street. If somebody wants to go through the ADU process and make the investment, it's because they wanna recoup on their investment and collect a rent. Pretty easy and cheap to add a driveway or add parking.
I think of Pinehurst and then by the lake, that's what was I was thinking.
You can do stacked parking, you can, you know. Unless you're in a house that, you know, you got four or five teenagers that are driving in a small lot and parking's already a premium. I don't know why you would introduce that on yourself. My concern is the, and I, I really think the state should amendment, is the absentee landlord aspect of it. You know, I think proprietor ownership in a community or a neighborhood, you should reside in that neighborhood if you're gonna take advantage. Of this additional housing unit, allowing, you know, essentially absentee landlords. And I'm not saying all absentee landlords are bad landlords. But a lot of the times, the problems that we run into are absentee landlords that don't live in the community. Look at something, just crunch numbers and, okay, I can buy this, I can invest this and this is my return and that's. All they really care about.
I'm gonna go. Get some feedback from our board members, because there isn't, I don't have a lot of, you know, meat and potatoes here to bite into tonight, as you have kind of.
No, I think, you know, one of the things that was discussed is, you know, you could potentially, you can put these under site plan review. But then it's, what are you gonna really review? You know, we're gonna start getting into site plan review of people's yards and swing set placement, you know, you're gonna keep your pool or. I think it's just, I think a lot of people that look at this. We're gonna still revert back to in-law apartments. I think you're gonna see more people trying to create in-law apartments and then column ADUs afterwards. And it's gonna become kind of an enforcement nightmare for my office. Try and regulate. Other communities have a policy. That you can't rent a unit to a new tenant until it's gotten a certificate of inspection. That's what they do in like Medford, Cambridge, because of the college populations and everyone's looking to make a few bucks off college students. That's all well and good, but now you, you know, you're creating more staffing requirement and costs for the town. So I think until it, you know, if it becomes a problem throughout the town, that's something that might wanna be considered down the road that. You know, the, the number of inspections and certificates can, can cover the costs incurred by the town to employ somebody to do this. But it's, it's so new and. There's no case law to fall back on.
Start at this end, Mr. Drew.
Sure, so I agree with you, there's not a whole lot of discussion, but a couple of questions, you mentioned this several times. Renting or tenants, there's no chance that these could be deeded separately? And, and actually sold?
That hasn't been completely determined. Now, one of the questions that was asked of the chairperson of the EOHCC at one of our inspectors' meetings is a two-family home. Is a two-family home entitled to one or two? And the answer that we got initially was out of the gate as, well, as long as they're in separate ownership, like a condo. Which now, you know, now you're potentially making a two-family home into a four-family. So they keep saying that they're gonna have new regulations before this comes into effect. I don't believe it for a second. It takes them probably eight or nine years to update the, the building code. By you get, by the time you get everybody working together and commenting. So I think we're gonna be flying freestyle for a while here.
So the only other comment or question is, we already have an in-law apartment by, zoning by law. And it's restricted to family members only, we've talked about that. What happens when that family member passes away, moves, and it's sold because in the bank allows it? I mean, it's no longer family restricted to family because you can't really enforce that, I'm assuming.
Well, it's a special permit, so you can restrict it. And the ZBA is, since I've been here, consistently restricting to the current owner and they're non-transferable. So typically, when a mortgage company sees that. They wanna see that the new owner gets a special permit.
Okay.
We've, you know, people do, do the right thing on their own.
Being asked that they'd have to come in and get the.
Yeah, they'll come in and go through the process to get a special permit issued in their name. And then that gets registered with the deed of the property.
I know of one that. Exists, I'm not sure who lives there now, because I know the person that sold it.
There are some in town that predate zoning. The zoning requirement, so that they're technically legal. I believe there was probably a few special permits issued that were, didn't have the condition that they weren't transferable. And if it doesn't have that condition, then it, it goes with the property.
Interesting, alright. That's all I have for now. Like I said, this is. Whole new, whole new ballgame.
Yeah, I mean, there's a lot in that, in that change. The other thing that nobody's discussing, I am getting inundated with right now, is grandfathered lots. The governor changed that to take away the merger doctrine. Meaning now there's a lot of lots, like down the lake, down Pinehurst, if you look at the old subdivision maps, they're made up of twenty-five hundred square foot lots. Well, if you have a house sitting on one end and you have ten of those, you can just carve out, you know. Five to make a ten thousand square foot lot, and you have a grandfathered lot. So that has, you know, right now I have five of those sitting on my desk, we've already approved one. Construction hasn't started, but reviewing these, they all appear to comply with this new requirement. Which means people are gonna see houses because there's no notification or anything, it's just a building permit. And then, you know, I know again, somebody's gonna be calling my office screaming saying, why are they building a house across the street from me? And it's, it's not my doing, I'm just following the state law. So it's, I mean, I think it's, I don't like the way the zoning goes about because I think zoning is, should be controlled by the community. Who has their own bylaw. And now we have MBTA communities that increase the density. We've just changed the grandfathered thing and unfortunately, Bill Ricker is one of these communities that's. As was at one point, a vacation community and we have these finger lots all over the place and they're on a recorded plan. And then you now throw this ADU thing on, if all these things max out, you know, you're gonna. The housing's gonna skyrocket and, and values of everything are gonna go way down.
I agree. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Robertson.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. So you started your conversation saying that there were two approaches and, and then you only covered the one. And that is that it was a simple zoning, zoning change. So what was the other aspect that you had in mind when you, when you started your conversation with us?
Two approaches, and then what did I cover? I'm sorry.
Just called it, you know, considered it a simple zoning change. And so I thought there was another aspect that.
Yeah, well. It's. It's, I. It says just a zoning change, I guess you should have said. Simple, just a zoning change, it now allows you to do this, but you still have to comply with all of these other regulations between. Title five for septic, building codes, um, any of the DPW regulations on water delivery or whatever. Ever is decided, uh, by the water department. I mean, I think, you know, talking to Superintendent, uh, Mr. Russell. He's of the opinion that it's a single-family home as an accessory use, so you're gonna get your water and sewer. On your own property, um. They're not gonna separately meter, they're not gonna have all these things cut into the road every time somebody wants to put one in, it's on your property. I think that, it's a simple zoning change.
So it's simple with an answer.
Simple on the zoning end, on the other end, it's very complicated.
So, uh, Mr. Dina addressed the, the parking a little bit, I guess it's not an issue, I, 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 of course, I'm in rural residential, so. Uh, my paradigm is, uh, is a little bit. Little bit different, I mean, I have a large, wide parking area, so if I were to go and do an ADU. You know, I could very easily squeeze one in, but, you know, we have a large number of flagpole lots, uh, in the town, if they want to put one in. You know, then I think, well, how are they gonna squeeze, you know, how are they gonna deal with the, the additional parking? You know, without that blocking the, uh. Garage or, you know, or something else, and so.
Right. I don't have the answer to that.
We just, we just, we can see what, uh, what, what comes out of that.
The concern on that end is kind of the absentee landlord, you live at the property, you're not gonna do something to make. You know, where you live more difficult, somebody that's not there. Doesn't really, uh, hey, if you don't want to rent it, I'll rent it to somebody else, you know, I'm not living there.
Uh, now, y- you seem to indicate that, uh, and I, and as I read the materials, it sounded like you could have as many ADUs as you could. Squeeze into your, uh, your property.
You're allowed one by right, um, more than one, I believe is a special permit requirement.
I'll look again to clarify that, because I, and it may have been one of the, in the KP Law article or something else that indicated that, okay. Now, uh, originally when you started speaking, um, you know, I was thinking that, okay, we should leave the in-law suites language intact. Uh, and yet, as you were talking, you began to convince me that maybe we need to do something to address the in-law suites. Language that's there, what is your preferred approach on this?
My, my preferred approach, so. I give you my per, preferred approach and then my opinion. My preferred approach is just to leave it as it is. My opinion is, under state law, you can argue, I don't need a special permit. Because forty-eight says you can't regulate the contents of a single-family home. Now you can make the argument, it's still a single-family home, and who? Is the town to tell me what I can have in my single-family home? And the examples I, I, I would cite is kind of like a. A master suite, if you want to build your best master suite and you're gonna have a sitting area. And, you know, a master bedroom and a changing room and a bathroom, and maybe I want to add a little refrigerator and a wet bar. But it's not an in-law, it's a master suite, so that's a permitted. You know, um. As long as it's being used as a single-family home, that's where it becomes difficult to enforce, because the person that builds it could be doing it with the right intent. It's, the next person that buys it may have a totally different. Intent to use, and that's when it becomes a zoning violation. But I think. There's no need to change it now, we've been consistently. Doing it, monitoring it, um, we haven't been appealed on it. The special permits for in-laws get registered with the deed of the property. I don't think it's broke, so. I don't really think there's anything to fix unless, you know, they wanted to change the allowable area.
If I'm gonna do a, uh, ADU. Or someone in town wants to do an ADU that is an addition, whether it's, uh, of the garage or instead of the garage or, uh, or bump out. Can they have a common entry?
Yes.
Not the right answer.
Well, I mean, they have to have a common entry that, that meets the code requirements for a common entry. So it's not just a simple, you know, you're gonna get into a fire-rated enclosure. With fire-rated doors that open to it, you're probably gonna have a shared, um, smoke detector in the common area that connects to each unit. Talking to Kelly earlier, and I said, you know, one of the differences that people don't realize is, in an in-law apartment. If I have an in-law apartment at my house. If I burn something and my fire alarm goes off, it wakes my mother up. In her unit, you don't want that to happen in a rental unit, a two-family that. You don't know who's on the other side of that wall, and every time they do something, they're waking me up. So you'll have separate systems, but the common area needs to be able to pick up a fire and notify both sides. So you can have a common entry, and, you know, some people may like that aesthetic, because common entry. Kind of maintains the single-family appearance. But you still have two means of egress requirement.
Now, the common entry, does that count towards a nine hundred or not?
No, I would say it doesn't. But it gets into the calculation of total area of the house. You know, to, to come up with what's the allowable square footage that you're allowed to build.
Alright, um. Yeah, we'll need to have more conversations aboard about the special permit piece, so, anyway, okay, thank you very much, that's all I have for now.
Mr. Trabu.
Yeah, so I had a, you said, I think earlier, you mentioned with the, the AUD, if it was sep- separate, they, they need to get a variance for the setbacks, correct? Is that what you said?
Well, I. What I, I said was, we don't have reduced setbacks for accessory structures.
Yeah, but is it, doesn't it say, it's, cause from what I'm reading right here, it says, allows property owners to build an AUD without having to get. A special discretionary approval from the local zoning board, so does that include the zoning board of appeals?
Well, that would meaning, saying that you can meet all the zoner requirements. You know, you can, just like you could build a house now, if you can meet all the zoning requirements, you don't need to go get approval. So if somebody could come in and, and on a five thousand square foot lot, show you that they're gonna meet front, side, and rear setbacks.
Alright.
Then they meet it, the question becomes if you can't. Right now, Mass General Law says hardship is lot shape, topography, and soil conditions. You're not being deprived the use of your single family, you're being deprived the use of an accessory structure that you want, is that really a hardship? I don't think so, um, but I'm not the one to determine it, because there's no case law on it.
Could be fun.
Yeah, fit, fun for everyone else.
Yeah, well, no, I know, I know you're looking at, cause I, I could, I could tell it was like, um. So. Cause this is, this is coming, obviously, because we're discussing this now in January, and it wasn't supposed to be February sixth. So we're not.
But the, the whole timing of how this was put together didn't really give communities the time. To react, unless you're a, um, a city with a city council that can make zoning changes in two meetings.
Yeah, yeah, no, it's, uh, well, I mean, that's why we. We were setting it at least to get it to Springtown meeting, but even, even then is. I mean. A lot to go over. Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm okay with actually right now, as I, I'm kind of agreeing with, with you on just keeping it. Was it, you know, yeah, leaving the in-laws as is with the special permit and.
Yeah, I, I don't believe there's any reason to, to touch the in-laws. As much as I don't like it. This all kind of sits on. The building department's shoulders right now. And we've been working and talking with other inspectors and other communities of how you're gonna address this. To treat it fairly to everybody and not treat them any different. Different than any other accessory structure. And implement it, and see what the reactions. Community, some communities may be accepting, some may think. The building department's crazy and we need to appeal this, and, and then that would warrant, you know. Taking it to town meeting to, to change the zoning.
So you're basic, you're saying is, may, just essentially. Kind of sit and wait on this, see what the courts do. And then from whatever decisions the courts make, or if the, they change the law a little bit more, then bring it to town meeting, so this is sort of just.
There may not ever be a, um, a reason to bring it to town meeting.
Yeah.
You know, kind of what I've described to you as, as how it plays out setback wise and code compliance, building, title five, all the other things. That may prevent a lot of them. From being built. Now, you're gonna have a group of people that are thrilled with that, and you're gonna have another group of people that.
Yeah.
Just think that meets the spirit of the law.
The, the, being like, what is this, and they're like, oh yeah, they can do that by right, they're like, well.
Well, the state may either modify the regulation once they start. Getting some feedback when this is implemented, they may leave it the way it is, and then. Individual community, like, some communities already have this in their zoning, they allow these ADUs, they regulate them themselves, um. And it's passed either their city council or, or town meeting, we don't have it in town, so it's. No one really knows what the reaction to the community as a whole is, now, it's probably gonna be, I don't want it in my neighborhood, as, uh, you know, a lot of these. Things happen when a project comes up, but I think you need to. Be consistent on how you permit these and allow them to be built. And then gauge the reaction of the community, and that's gonna tell you, you know, what you need to make for a change. Because right now, the state's kind of left it. As vague as possible, the one, you know, I, I live in Woburn. We have reduced setbacks for accessory structures, which I, you know, it allows down to four feet. On the rear for any accessory structure, regardless of size. Now I know, if my neighbor now decides he's gonna build another dwelling and move. Somebody in four feet from my rear property line, I'm gonna be upset. We don't have that in Bill Ricker. It's the same setback as your house. So it's not gonna be any closer than the existing house, um, you're gonna maintain, you know. The setbacks that we have now.
Unless the ZBA allows a variance.
Right, but then there's also the, uh. Is that a legal hardship to get a variance? You know, take the ADU out of it, if it's just, let's just say, I want a garage, which is an accessory structure. And I can't fit it on my property, is that a hardship because I want a garage? To me, no, it doesn't meet the letter of the law, if you want a garage, go find a property that one can fit on. I'd look at ADUs the same way, just because you want it, you, you, it's already a single-family home, you have a single-family house there, you're not being deprived of any of your rights. So they could, you know, the ZBA could grant a variance on it, and a neighbor could appeal it, and then the judge can finally make that decision and say, that's not a hardship. And now we've got case law starting to be established.
Hold up, no, so, but it could also go the other way, right, right, cor- correct on that, which is, it could be that. You know.
Yeah, a judge could say, yeah, oh, absolutely, it can grant a variance on, um.
Well, no, not even the, you, you, I'm. Well, I'm, I'm, I'm curious, so, is, you know, this is, it's by right, so it's. Yeah, it, it, it will be, would be interesting to see, cause I would just. Cause I would, I would be curious to see if you, you think the judge would actually say, you know what, no, you can.
But you gotta take the, the ADU aspect out of it, the state's calling it an accessory to a single-family home.
Yeah.
A swimming pool is an accessory to a single-family home, a detached garage is an accessory to a.
Everyone can have a pool, not everyone can have a shed.
Not everyone has the room to fit a swimming pool, not everybody has the room to fit a garage. That doesn't legally entitle you to relief from the zoning. Why would this be any different if we're being told by the state that we have to treat this, and you can't regulate it separately? You treat it as an accessory structure like you do all other accessory structures. Which is why you can't write a bylaw that says, you know, an, an ADU has to meet these requirements, because now you're singling that out. You have to treat it like any other accessory structure. That's allowed on the property. Makes sense?
Yeah. I guess that's, uh, that's it for now, Mr. Chairman, we got the board members speak.
Mr. Sumaya.
I, I think I'm okay with, uh, with the, um, clarification of the. Of, um, of Maclemay on, on what the ADU, um, and what the law is, is, is asking for, so I think I'm okay.
Ms. Adina, you wanna?
Yeah, just a couple of them, one of them, um. Chris had mentioned appeals, and from what I've been reading, it almost falls under the same as what the MBTA or Housing Choice, if. Somebody does want to appeal a neighbor's ADU or them building it. They, again, they're gonna have to put, they can be asked, it isn't asked, but I think it's more, they're gonna have to put down a substantial amount to fight the case. Uh, that's what they did with the Housing Choice Bill when the governor put that in effect. That makes it difficult, um, I think residents just need to know that, you know.
Yeah, and, and again, it's gonna rely on the judge that the case gets in front of, you may have some that are. Against ADUs, and you may so, have some that want to see as many pop up as possible, but. This is so fresh and new. There's really nothing to react to yet.
I agree, letting it kind of play out, I don't think the state's even gonna be, they, she put it into effect, the governor in what, in August? It's, it started, she signed it, and then she was waiting till February to actually put it in complete effect with. With guidance for us, anyway, I, I don't see that coming that fast. I mean, they're trying to drag their feet.
I, and I think you shared the cat, I think she had the, um. Kind of.
Yes, so, Chair, through you, the state has come out with. A six-page document of draft regulations that's in you guys' packets. They held public comment period, and I kind of summarized the, the comments that we heard through that public hearing to an email to you guys a while back. Really what we're hoping that their regulations change is. Actually weigh in and acknowledge these life safety code standards as far as how that's supposed to relate to what they're doing. And then give some extra clarity on, you know, this is an accessory use to a single-family home. Whereas a lot of the language right now mentions single-family district, well, we have other uses in a single-family district, are those supposed to have ADUs allowed? We also have single-family homes in other districts, so do they get them or not? So they were asked to clarify things like that still, so we do have the draft regulations. But they're not done, and they need more work, and the state says they will have it done in time for the implementation date.
Right.
I.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Site plan review, so there, there's not gonna be. Anything, I mean, cause in Bill Ricker, we always worry about runoff on some of these buildings, like, I mean, I know when we built ours, the, everything seemed fine, but then we got all that rain. You know, we've got flooding in our yards, but it's because the grade, everything changed, we didn't see that when we did it, so this. What regulations do we have, you've got a lot on your plate with this, because we're the what-ifs.
That's, when you build yours, the regulations that we currently have regarding infiltration back into the ground weren't in place. So, I mean, if you build a two-car garage now, you need to show that you're gonna infiltrate the, uh. Impervious area back into the ground and how that works, and, you know, the engineering department reviews, it'd be the same for either attached or detached. ADU, you're increasing the impervious area, how are you gonna treat it? The other, you know, so this goes in effect essentially in two weeks, February sixth. Town meeting isn't till what, May? If we decide, you know, we're gonna impose, and I'm just gonna say site plan, rules and regulations. That may spur a bunch of people to beat the regulation. And just inundate us with. Applications to get in before the regulations, so that they're technically grandfathered. Again, there's. The, the state's not giving us a lot to react to, and we're trying to interpret. We're trying to interpret it. The same as any. Other accessory structure. Under zoning. But on the building codes, it's really another dwelling unit. That has other regulations. And I think. Like I said, my opinion is. Let it play out. Um, see what type of reaction we get, either good or bad. Which will then kind of gauge the community of. What? If any action needs to be taken.
And we have eight hundred square feet. This, the state's thing goes up to nine hundred. Would we, I mean, we're gonna let it, if we let it ride, we'd have to change that in town meeting, or we can change that coding.
For in-law apartments, it's it's, that's a separate, you know.
Just curious on that.
It may be something that the the town wants to consider of, you know, maybe you allow in-law apartments with a thousand square feet. To kind of spur somebody to, if you want them, not to build ADUs and steer them. Steer them more towards towards in-law apartments that are. Maybe a little better regulated. Something to consider, but. I I don't, I've heard from both sides. I've gotten phone calls that this is the worst thing ever, it's gonna ruin the community. I've gotten phone calls from people, oh, this is great, I can build something for my. My parents to live independently. Um, I have had another gentleman who came in. Read everything, had a great understanding of it, wants to build one for his parents, and we had a discussion about um, storage and stuff. And, you know, my interpretation of it is if it's nine hundred square feet, you meet the max, and you want a detached structure. That doesn't mean you have a full basement that can be. Finished after we walk away, or a walk-up attic that can add another bedroom. If you wanna add those things. They need to be constructed so they don't meet the building code for habitable space. If you want it for storage, you're gonna have a reduced ceiling height in the basement. Or you're not gonna be able to. Meet the ceiling heights in an attic. And, you know, we kind of had a back and forth, but this gentleman understood, he's, I get it. And he saw me think about it, and he left, and then he came back in and he said, you know what? I think I actually have three house lots here. I have like forty-five thousand square feet of land, and I found the old subdivision plan. So now he's submitted it, or rather than an ADU. To look at. Um. He'll end up with, if it meets the requirement. His single family lot right now is gonna end up with four houses on it.
Through a variance.
No, through the grandfathered process that I was just mentioned earlier of uh, the anti-merger. It's also in the.
ADU is part of the legislation.
Yeah, it's also in the same legislation that was just filed. Also what the, what you were mentioning, having to put up a bond for an appeal.
So he would need to have smaller lots.
So if a lot of the older um, subdivisions in town predate zoning. And if you go back, um. I don't think your neighborhood does, but um, if you look at your deed, a lot of times it'll reference. Multiple lots, and people think, oh. You know, lot means I can build a house. It doesn't. It just means on a subdivision plan somewhere, you own multiple lots that are contiguous. So over the years, as the zoning changed, and those lot requirements get bigger. Our general law was if you hold them in common ownership for zoning purposes, the town merges them together. Not physically, not changing the paper, just we treat them as one lot to try and get lots to comply with the zoning change. So. Over time, somebody that had. Say fifty lots. If they owned them from, you know, when they originally established in, say, nineteen oh five and passed down through the family. As the zoning changed in town, those fifty lots became twenty lots. And, you know, and then fifteen lots, and as the lot sizes get bigger, those lots merged. This new um. And they merge because they're in common ownership, or budding properties. This new um, change to the zoning at the state level. Got to did away with common ownership. So as long as you own lots on a plan that predate zoning. They can be held in common ownership. And you can. Carve out ten thousand square feet. It becomes a grandfathered lot, not a term that everyone wants to use anymore. Whereas. Prior to this, and and the other five thousand square foot. Grandfathered lot still has um. The common ownership. Can't be under common ownership requirement, so that's a little more difficult to prove. This is a lot easier to prove because you're not chasing ownership through all the years to see if it was held in common ownership. This week's.
Lipping things in. I don't have any.
It's a lot to chew.
Ms. Henderson.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um. Building Commissioner says. Leave the zoning bylaw as is. And I believe. Said. Only change a definition, add a definition. Can you explain what the big difference is?
Absolutely. So part of the webinars that the state was holding and different organizations were holding. Back in the fall when this went out was saying the only thing that the law actually requires is the definition, so if there had been time to put that into Fall Town Meeting. A lot of towns were doing that then. I'm, as Mark was saying, we don't actually even need to change that. I pulled up our bylaw, we don't define accessory dwelling unit right now, so nothing in our bylaw conflicts with the state's definition. So. We already have the recodification process. I think if our professional thinks we really need it, she can just add it there, otherwise. I don't see any conflict, so I'd agree with Mark that we could just leave it as is.
Nice.
The argument to that is, it says in the zoning, that if it's silent, it's not allowed. So someone could pick up the zoning bylaw and say, well, Bill Ricker's in violation because they don't have a definition for ADUs. Um. They're banning them in Bill Ricker.
No, no, we don't say we ban them.
No, but the zoning does say if it's silent, it's not an allowed use. It's essentially banned.
Like that.
Yeah, I mean, it's it's kind of a catch-all because you you can't anticipate everything. But that only becomes a violation if someone comes in and applies for a permit, and we say. Nah, zoning silent, we don't allow them. Because state law is gonna trump. Every time, you know, there's the Dover amendments in there. We don't define the Dover Amendment in uh.
And we honor it.
In our zoning bylaw, but when it comes in front of different committees, you know, it's been in front of this board, and you've all acknowledged it, and. You know, got the best project you can. Out of the guys, you know, somebody's using the Dover Amendment. There's, there's a number of other things that are in forty-eight that we don't define. It's not that I don't think that we should have it in the zoning. I think it's. So fresh and new. That it's the opportunity for this thing to go completely awry without any. Guidance.
Yeah, I don't think we have to add a definition just yet.
I mean, the the state's defined it. We know where to find the definition. We're not denying the existence of the definition, and we're not gonna deny somebody their right to it if they come in for a permit.
Oh. Okay. Oh, that seems like a simple solution. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
On the planning board side of things, not on his side.
It's all for you.
In terms of outcry per se from the public, obviously. The world's falling, we're gonna have so many ADUs, right? Um. But hopefully. It was one smart person in the room when they wrote these things. Of the group, because they did put in things in here like nine hundred square feet. Or fifty percent of.
Right.
How is, you know, whichever, you know. Is smaller, right? So it's. The max we're ever gonna get in an ADU is nine hundred square feet. Um, so if you have a three thousand square foot house, half your square footage is fifteen hundred, well, no, you're over the nine hundred, so you can't have fifteen hundred, you're at nine hundred. So that, that was good. Um, so the smart guy in the room won that day. Um, the smart guy in the room won when they talked about one. Um, by right. ADU. Um, they didn't allow it so that if you have five acres. You can put ten ADUs on there. It's still one, and then if you want ten, then you are subject to. The review of the boards. Um, so. Again, there was one smart guy in the room, and the rest of them were. Picking their nose or something. Um.
It could have been a gal.
So the the outcry that I hear and and I kind of feel the same is about short-term rentals. Um, you know, somebody could. Put one of these next to their pool if they've got a big yard, and then. All of a sudden, that becomes the party yard. Um. So. I think if we're gonna do something with this and and the. Stuff the state says, says we can do that. Um, I think we need to ban short-term rentals in our town.
I I don't disagree with you. One. I don't think it's a big issue. You know, we're not a coastal community where, you know, someone wants to spend a week here and and swim in Nutty's Lake. Um, there really are.
When they come to party, Mark, they're not looking to swim.
No, I get it. Um.
And if you have a nice pool.
But the. I agree with. What you're trying to regulate. The question becomes, how do you regulate it? Because then you're gonna get, kind of get back to, you can't, the only way to regulate that is. To have some type of requirement that you need a certificate of inspection. Every time you rent it. Um, because it's difficult, short of, I only know of two um, short-term rentals in town though, that we found on online. Um, haven't really heard a lot of outcry about it, been by the house. I wish my neighbor would keep his house up as nice as some of these are. Now, I don't know what goes on. Uh, whether they're party houses or um, they're creating a problem for the neighborhood, but I would think that's something. You know, noise complaint, the police department's gonna address. I just don't see it as like um, the Cape or, you know, Salisbury Beach or up in Gloucester, where you're gonna get turnover after turnover after turnover, and then. How do you regulate it, really? I mean. Like I was saying um, earlier is. You essentially have to. Create another town position. To go out and inspect these every time somebody leaves, do they meet the requirements? Um. Otherwise, you you just, by the time. You know, somebody rents it on the weekend. And they complain Monday to us, and we go out there, and now it's all clean and nobody's there, and. Um, am I even gonna prove that? You rented it, or that there was somebody there. Without trying to take them through the court system. And.
I'm sure that complaint will be of video pictures or whatnot from the resident that's been annoyed by.
But if you've ever tried to take a zoning complaint through, like Lowell District Court, um.
Well, again.
They don't give them the highest priority, let's just say that.
But, but especially if you don't have any leg to stand on, right? But if if we have a short-term rental bylaw. Then we can enforce it, and.
Well, again.
Again, with all of our bylaws, we just need to enforce them to their teeth.
The example I'm gonna use is, and everybody in here knows that, or somebody, is the in-law apartments. We all know that there's in-law apartments. In a majority, I would say probably now, the majority of the homes. Are they all occupied by family members? A lot of them are rentals. Now, for us to enforce that. Um, short of the tenant. Getting into. A fight with the landlord and filing a complaint that either he's not meeting the housing code, and we can get a housing inspector, and the tenant lets us in. Or it, really, it's the occupant filing the complaint against the owner.
On a plate that's in the driveway to say they're not a family member of that.
But how do you prove they're living there?
They walk in and so you have somebody sit there, see, and leave, and then they come back, and then they leave, and they come back.
Gets to, you know. Limited staffing, that's what I'm getting at is. With the amount of construction and the staffing that I have. It, you know, we try and keep up with that. You wanna add another leg rate uh. Level of regulation.
Thought I heard you guys ask for a zoning enforcement officer. No?
That, I mean, I'm just giving you, if that's the direction they wanna.
Meeting member, I was heard, we we wanted zoning enforcement officer. I'm in full agreements with that. I'm ready to pay you a position for that because we need it, Mark.
Yep.
And whether or not they're enforcing. The in-law bylaw or, you know.
But what I'm getting at is it's not.
Whatever it is that they have to enforce, right?
How do you prove what's going on in a private residence? I mean. You can call and tell the police, the guy's selling drugs, there's cars coming in and out of here, they have the resources to pull vehicles over, search them, and it'll go on. They'll spend, you know, hours and hours and dollars. Chasing down something to try and, you know, prove that there's a drug deal or that, take them to court, and nine times out of ten, it's. What do you think they're gonna do with, he's?
Me, cuz they have one across the road, and the person that's living there has New Hampshire plates in the driveway. So, I mean. I I mean, again, enforcing our stuff, it's as simple as there's a car parked on a road in my neighborhood that has no license plate on it. It has two flat tires. Why has this thing not been tagged or wrecked by the police department? Now the plows have plowed around it with the recent snowstorm. We don't enforce our current stuff.
For that, but.
We we can, we can all, you know, whine about enforcement, we already don't enforce, right? There's limited enforcement with a lot of our stuff. There's some, something as simple as an unplated, unregistered car with two flat tires has sat on the road for over three months. I'm doing this as a test.
Yep.
Cuz I could have complained a long time ago and had that thing tagged. But I didn't, I'm doing it as a test, just much like the pothole complaint.
Chairman, are we getting a little bit off topic?
Well, I think everybody else has had fifteen to twenty minutes. Uh, Ms. Henderson.
I don't disagree with you.
Turn on the soapbox, thank you.
I was just wondering about the topic.
Um, the, well, the topic is, he's brought it up, is enforcement of our bylaws, and I'm just proving a point that. We can talk till our faces are purple and explode about enforcement. When we aren't enforcing current things. Right? So you can't tell me we're not gonna do this because we don't, we can't enforce it. Well. If, then that's the case, then you already need somebody to enforce much stronger with our bylaws. We need somebody from the police department to enforce our parking regulations with unregistered cars. Um, there's a lot of things that we need to do, so I'm just kind of. Putting a little, you know. Band-aid over that. The the enforcement part is a sore subject. We need it.
What?
So short-term rentals, my biggest.
Yep.
Pet peeve in this thing, because I do believe we've got residents in this town that have big enough properties that have beautiful enough backyards. They'll plop an ADU on there, and they'll create. A situation where they're renting out their pool. Right? They're gonna be renting, hey, now you're right, we don't live on the coast or on a a lake, but we have a lot of beautiful pools in our. And then you're gonna have, so again. You you, police will have to do underage drinking and all that, but. Unless we got something for you guys to use for enforcement. Your enforcement is null and void anyway, so. Um, all right, so we've all gotten a chance to speak very much tonight. Um, eh. There's definitely a lot of thought we need to put into this, whether or not we add a definition, uh, leave it completely out, um. Create a short-term rental, uh, talking about. In-laws leaving it, modifying it, um. Obviously, for right now, we can't do anything without real guidelines from the state, which these aren't guidelines, these are a bunch of definitions and, you know. Lawyer Google that's. So. Uh, I will now turn to the public and allow them to give us a brief. Opinion, if you have one. Anybody in the room or online, please put up your hand.
Let's.
Chair, after they're done, if I could have one short alibi.
Sure. Real quick before I, in in terms of the short-term rentals. To me. Um, the best way to address that. Is to get in touch with your state legislature to put pressure on the absentee landlord. I think if you are required to live there, are you really gonna inconvenience yourself? To have a party, you know, house in your backyard? That's where the absentee landlord thinks. And the other thing in terms of enforcement, and I've used this um, as an example on FinCom. How many police officers do we have in town? Roughly, I don't know. Say fifty. They work twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, patrolling, but yet we still have crime. They can't stop it. It's how much money and resources do you wanna throw at something? To try and resolve it, and that's what it comes down to. Do you wanna live in a police state? Um. Everybody has inalienable rights. I like to think that when we get. What I will call legitimate complaints, my office gets right on them and gets out there and typically gets them resolved. what I will call legitimate complaints, my office gets right on them and gets out there and typically gets them resolved. The issue it becomes like what you just said, is you're having an experiment to see how long it goes. And somebody condones something for months, years, and then something happens. And now I'm mad at the neighbor and I'm gonna call about that shed that he built in the backyard. And we go out there and say, well, when did you build it? Been there for ten years. Well, did you just put a window in your house and notice that? Like, why didn't you call if that was a zoning violation when it went up? Well, me and my neighbor got along then, but now he's putting his snow in my yard. And what people don't realize is there's also statute of limitations on enforcement. So they might like the neighbor that lived there now who has the bobcat in his backyard. He's a great guy and he's got all this equipment, but he takes care of my yard. But once you let him do it for a period of time, you're prevented from taking any action against him.
So on in-laws, I was on the zoning board of appeals. They have to register those each year, right?
Correct. They're supposed to register the occupants with the town clerk.
So do we have a list and at some point during the year, figure out these?
I have never specifically gone down and asked for that list.
And and then knocked on their door and said, you know, your in-law is not up to date. We're here asking for, you know, you provide it within thirty days or we're coming for a, you know.
No, I mean, with the limited staffing my office has, we're reactive. We're not proactively out there trying to stop zoning violations. We react to the zoning violations that were notified from neighbors. And then we prioritize on what's actually affecting a neighbor. Because we do get a lot of zoning complaints and a lot of times we'll get a complaint from somebody in Pinehurst against the business in North Billricka. And the complaint's because the guy overcharged me to do an oil change. That's not affecting your day to day life. If you live next door to somebody or something in your neighborhood is affecting your quality of life, that gets prioritized and put at the top. Um, we try and respond to them, but I, like I get, I said, I have limited staffing and we're reactive, not not proactive like the police department.
Um, I mean, through the chair, eh, I feel, eh, I mean, anybody who does have or was able to build an in-law and you know, they sold their house, the person moved out, I think it would be very irresponsible of that owner to rent it to anybody other than a family member because the fact of they didn't buy the mortgage company, did not give them a multifamily loan on the home, they gave them for a single family, so God forbid something was to happen. I mean, they'd be liable because it's not multifamily, nor is their insurance for multifamily. So, I mean, that's on the owner to really hurt themselves.
Thank you. Well.
Any of you want to speak? No? Online?
Here, there are no hands raised on Zoom.
Perfect.
Great.
I think we've all gotten our, um, Mr. Robinson, sorry, yes.
Sorry. Uh, we'd love to, uh, see the opportunity with these A D Us that we, uh, do have.
Check your mic, Lee. Thank you.
Yes, we would, uh, I would love to see that we, uh, again, we're grossly undersidewalked here in the, in our, in our town. And I would love to see sidewalks put in as part of, uh, any A D U work in the future.
This is, I will give you what's just my opinion, but that would be treating them differently than any other accessory structure. We can't tell somebody you want to put a pool in, you don't have a sidewalk in front of your house. It's something that's granted as a right to a single family home.
Well, we're asking every subdivision when they add, when they, you know, again, slightly different, but it's another dwelling and, uh, and so, you know, I I think that we need to take a look at.
Yeah.
E- equal treatment when we add, uh, add a dwelling, so.
The, what you're gonna remember is under zoning, this is an accessory to a single family. Under building codes, it's clearly another dwelling. You're gonna be asking for sidewalks under a zoning requirement, which I don't think will fly, um, you know, if somebody appeals it, you can certainly try and implement that. Um, and we'll probably establish the first case law. But I, again, you.
Ask not, then I'm asking and we'll, we'll.
Yeah.
I'll bring it up to our board. Thank you.
All right. Moving on.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the August twelfth, twenty twenty-four minutes as amended.
Second.
Okay.
Seconded by Mr. Drew.
Mr. Drew. Uh, any, uh, comments or questions on the, uh, August twelfth minutes? Seeing none. Uh, with a motion and a second, Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Mr. Tribu?
Yes.
Mr. Samaia?
Yes.
Sadina?
Yes.
Ms. Henderson?
Yes.
Ms. Rob, Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
And I am an I. Good, uh, September?
Uh, make a motion to approve the September ten minutes as amended.
Second.
Okay. Any discussions? Okay, Mr. Drew?
Hi.
Mr. Tribu?
Hi.
Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Robertson?
Yes.
Ms. Sadina?
Yes.
Mr. Samaia?
Yes.
And I am a yes. Votes from committees.
Through the chairs.
There's one more set of minutes.
Do we have?
Chair, we have not distributed the November draft, so we plan to bring November, December, and some specials to next month.
Perfect.
Through the chair, is that where we could make some corrections? There was a, um, for some reason, our minutes for, I believe it was the March tenth meeting that we, um, Ms. Henderson wasn't here and we took a vote on sending, if we were gonna send the M B T A to Springtown meeting. The vote is not in the minutes. There's a couple of questions. I think I made a few changes. The minutes have, are not what we agreed upon when we voted on them, the original. They're they're different. And I know we took a vote that evening. And that was March tenth last year, so we can just take a revisit at those minutes.
So which draft minutes that we're looking at now, are you saying don't match?
None.
Last March.
It's, it's a previously approved set of minutes.
Not on the agenda.
So.
March tenth is not on the agenda.
So we'll have to bring that back at a.
Take it offline.
Second meeting, yeah. We'll have to look at it and and we'll bring it up at the next meeting if.
So you've found an old error within those that we want to update and correct.
Essentially, yep.
Thank you.
Uh, so go ahead, Ms. Henderson.
Um.
Committees.
Reports from committees, uh, Mr. Chairman, I can just tell you that NimCOG next meeting is Wednesday for anyone who's interested. Uh, I hope to hear more about the regional bike path plan. Our open space and recreation plan committee met last week, the seventh. The new plan has been approved. Hallelujah. Um, the committee continues to meet monthly to ensure implementation. And we're starting to plan the tree city, the tree sampling, uh, handout and cleanup, greenup. I think that's all the committees.
Okay, uh, C P C?
Day?
C P C?
Yep. Cause I call C P A, spaded out there for a second. Um, we had a couple of applicants come in front of us. The Disc Golf was approved. We also approved the, um, Disc Golf, the Sons of Italy, yes. And the, uh, um, the horse riding, yes, I can never say the the horse riding. That was, um, also what came in front of us is the Veterans, um, project came in front of us, but we did not go move forward because it was written, the application was written under Veterans Housing and it's supposedly for educational purposes. Um, anything prior to that, that's, uh, rounds it up and the, let's see, parks, oh, open space, the rec department is doing unbelievable. Um, we're so lucky and fortunate to have the A P R O S, we are, I mean, it, guy does incredible work. And he got the budget underneath for, under budget for the, um, the rec department for the.
Skate park.
Yeah, skate park, yep. And.
And, uh, recodification?
The, the, the Conservation Trust Fund.
Conservation Trust Fund, yes.
Oh, yeah.
Recodification?
Thank you.
Yeah, I I had the plague, uh.
Go ahead, Blake.
Yeah, no, I mean, I I I had the plague. I was, uh, I was not coherent for that.
Yeah, we didn't have a full committee. We met in, uh, December, but, um, the second draft has been um, issued to the board, to the committee and be ready for Ju- January twenty-seventh.
Right. Um. Would now be a good time to, uh, announce the zoning forum?
We have a meeting on Thursday, yeah.
So just to clarify a bit more on the recodification committee, their typical monthly meeting is this Thursday, five P M. on Zoom. And then there will be a public forum. Oh, my gosh, thank you. The regular zoning recodification committee will meet this Thursday at four P M. on Zoom. On Monday, the twenty-seventh, we are looking for the public forum to really present the draft by law and what has been done. We'll be updating the webpage as well before then, so people can take a look at this crosswalk document as far as the old table of contents and how it's rearranged for the new table of contents, so that way they they know what they're about to see with this new document. Um, that meeting or that forum is planned for five P M. because there's also a select board meeting that night that starts at six. There's also a conservation commission that night that starts at six thirty. So if we were to go any later than five o'clock, we wouldn't have B A T V available. We would start competing with those other meetings. This is a public forum, not a public meeting, so as always, participation is optional. Staff, contact your local recodification committee or planning board member as well. Anyone who can't come at five o'clock, we understand. Reach out to us and we'll still get you the information you want.
We're gonna keep the forum open for a couple hours to allow people to come in?
So it's going to be formatted from the consultants. And so really, their best approach for delivering the information is how we're going to format it. So we haven't created the actual agenda yet. We just know it would need to be a five P M. start. That's the one date between our January meetings and our February meetings that both consultants can make.
Perfect. Our next regular planning board meeting is Monday, February tenth. And with that.
Um, no staff updates, that's it?
Um, I have a few. So we did that. First, I know that there have been some questions about the recent court ruling as far as the state and Milton goes with the M B T A Communities Act. So there's two main things that came out of it. One is that the state law itself was upheld. But also that the guidelines were determined to have been um, adopted outside of the procedure it should have. So what the court said is you need to go back and basically re-promulgate these guidelines, do it the right way with the different public notice requirements, and only then would it be good. So I've heard people on both sides of the argument consider this a win. It kind of feels like it's just administrative, but it also feels to some people that, well, it's not done yet, so maybe there's a chance to change it. So that's simple administrative process or that legal battle, whatever it may be, that's still with the state. In the meantime, our local bylaw has not gone into effect anyway because the A G and the H L C have not reviewed it yet. So until everything is done and happy and finalized, our, our bylaw is not in effect yet. Um, another question that we've been hearing a lot, there was a public notice that went in the newspaper that was talking about a taking being done on an M B T A property. So we just wanted to clarify, not that anyone's left online or in the room, but if you hear any questions for yourselves, it is the water bill, not taxes, and they're not taking, taking it, it's a lien on the property. Um, and per the public notice, any owners or other concerned parties, they're taking that action Monday, the twenty-seventh at noon. So reach out to the collector treasurer's office if you have questions, if you're one of those parties. I wanted to let you guys know some upcoming applications that we expect. One is fifteen Middlesex Turnpike, which is the restaurant right there that has been a few different restaurants. Um, currently it is, it's had their department head meeting, they changed some stuff around. They came back to the department head meeting. What they're looking to do is take down the existing restaurant building and put up an indoor badminton paired with pickleball courts and another restaurant space. So they're hoping that the redevelopment here, it'll give us some indoor athletics, it'll still have a restaurant, maybe a bit more of an attraction to keep the next restaurant open a bit longer as well. So that site plan will probably be coming to you guys in the next month or two. All right, um, one thing that has been kind of in the queue for a while is at four oh five Boston Road. This is an existing multifamily. It's across the street from the post office, Saint Teresa's, that area, you may have seen a greenhouse with some renovation recently. They are looking to take the main floor of that existing multifamily and turn it into a coffee shop. So that would need to come to you as a mixed use special permit in order to make that conversion. And then the other one is one seventy-one Lexington Street, which is the new Recreation Department facility. I signed for their Conservation Commission copy of the plans today and we expect the submission to the planning board pretty soon. We're probably gonna look to open that in March, not in February. And let's see, as far as grants and plans go, we are looking.
I just asked about upcoming project. Uh, my understanding is that there's, uh, some housing being considered in Technology Park. Uh, I I know this because, uh, my friend used to work in that facility and he has been evicted because the, uh, the tenant has these plans and so.
So.
Duracity do we have for, uh, for this?
You have heard one of the owners in, I'm sorry, in Tech Park?
Yes.
Yeah. No, there's no zoning for housing in Tech Park that I'm aware of.
I I I understand.
I was immediately thinking of Federal Street. Sorry, no, I'm not aware of anything in Tech Park. Hmm. Um, as far as grants and plans, NimCOG does their annual technical assistance. The last two years, we've been using that for M B T A communities. So now we're opened up again a little bit, so we're looking to start public outreach for the twenty twenty-six Housing Production Plan Update this fall, so we'd start on that this year. We're also hoping to start with the master plan at the same time with that, so we can start getting some really meaningful public meetings going. Um, as Marley said, the open space and rec plan is completed. It can be found online. And as far as a kind of a fun project through the Open Space Committee as well, we do have graduate students from Tufts this semester who are going to be coming into town and helping us kind of assess all of the town-owned properties and what we should be doing with them and how we can best conserve. And thank you to those who went to the C P T C Site Plan webinar on January sixth. If you missed it, it was really good, but they always have it available at the annual conference, which is in Worcester, Saturday, March fifteenth. They have like three different sessions, maybe four that day. So you go for one Saturday, you hit a few different seminars and it's a pretty good day. And for the minutes, I think I already said, we'll have October, November, and some specials next month. When we get caught up in minutes, we want to start looking at the applications and the checklists and start getting those a bit streamlined, reorganized, having the appropriate number of hard copies actually listed as being required from what we what we used to require versus what we practice now and what we actually need. So it's a pretty simple request, but it's very low priority and it's not something that's going to compete for our time very well. So we'll, we'll try to have something each month just to give a a quick update on that. And I think the only other thing I didn't say is Historic District Commission has opened their public hearing. They are reviewing the removal of the Talbot Mills Dam. So their next meeting is going to be Wednesday, February fifth. One of the big questions they have and what they're looking for any public comment for is what is the appropriate mitigation? If they do approve it, how is it? How is the historic district still honored? So if you have any ideas, you can reach out to staff, you can attend the meeting, you can contact any Historic District Commissioner you know, but feel free to share any ideas that might mean something to you. And now I'm done.
Great. Thank you very much.
Uh, motion to adjourn?
Second.
Mr. Drew?
Hi.
Mr. Tribu?
Hi.
Mr. Samaia?
Yes.
Sadina?
Yes.
Mr. Robertson?
Yes.
Henderson?
Yes.
I am a yes. Good night, Bill Ricker. Happy New Year.